Good evening, everybody. It's a little different setup for us on the board, obviously. So I'm gonna have to look down here to see everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Monthly Meeting. We are here today at Connersville High School and we're very excited. We always like going somewhere else besides the admin office, so we appreciate being here. It is 6:30 PM, and let's all rise with the flag of allegiance. Okay, we have a presentation tonight, and I think I'm gonna start with Mr. Liggett. I think you're introducing some folks tonight.
I brought with me one of our CHS outstanding students, although I have several behind me back here, too. But in relation to this particular student, Eric Templeton, he was, he recently received the 2023 Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship recipient for Fayette County. And when I say that, it's not easy to do. I mean, there's certain steps you have to go through, and you have to put the time in, and you have to be dedicated just for the opportunity. So it's not granted to anyone. You have to meet certain criteria. And a criteria Garrett abided by and excelled in is community involvement, academic achievement, character, and leadership. Those four qualities. The Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship provides full tuition that pays for required fees. There's special allocation of $900 for required books and equipment for four years. And the scholarship is for undergraduates, full-time, for bachelor's degree in any Indiana public or nonprofit college or university. While CHS Garrett was involved in the National Honor Society for two years, the French Honor Society for two years, Student Council, and three years of French Club. And by the way, he's a member of the powerlifting team at BAM Fitness, so I'm gonna keep him near to me tonight. It's his night, and he's brought with him his parents, Lucy and Darwin Templeton. They're in the back, back there, but they're the main reason, one of the main reasons he's up here with us tonight. So I'm gonna turn the table over to Garrett, and he's gonna share some words on the Lilly Scholarship related to his future plans.
Hi, I'm Garrett. The Lilly Scholarship, it really helped me, you know, with my plans in the future. It's gave me a bunch of opportunities, a lot more than I expected to get. A lot of colleges have mailed me, mailed, give me opportunities, give me tuition, give me, even some colleges offer me free food for the four years. It's a lot of opportunities. It's presented to so many different colleges, I just couldn't imagine. I got, right now, I'm currently looking into going to nursing and then becoming an MP or CRNA after that. If I did that, I'd probably most likely go into the management side, too, and try and get a management degree with that degree. And I also, my other option looking at is for a different school, like different other schools, is being business management for four years, getting a bachelor's degree in business management. Right now, currently, I'm looking at Butler and the IU East, because they're offering me a lot of good deals.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions for Garrett?
Okay, and then I think you're gonna tell us a little bit about, or talk to us about early college high school.
I am, but before I do that, I'd like to welcome the board here. Of course Superintendent Collins, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Cessaro, and Director of Operations, Mr. Harris. But you're in a facility now that, in relation to the media center, is kind of revamped. And how do I know that? Well, you're sitting at the desk and the chairs, and it's utilized as a classroom quite frequently by our staff and our students. There's people in here all the time. When the TVs are utilized, which we'll utilize tonight, kids use them for different projects and things like that. We do have a conference room back there where we house our administrative meetings in relation to the admin here at the high school. And then kids can communicate with their colleges in that back room there through virtual learning, so that's part of the process. There is a built-in sound system, which we're not utilizing tonight because we don't have need for it tonight. Mrs. Geisting is our media center specialist. She's behind me, back here. But she kind of coordinates everything within these four walls here, in addition to working with the teachers outside the classroom. So if we didn't have her here, some of the opportunities for our kids probably wouldn't be with us at that time. So I wanted to recognize her. But I brought with me one of our lead teachers, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson is our Business Department Chair, and he is also our ECHS Director. He actually gave a presentation a week ago or so to some kids and parents and talked about, you know, what are the benefits of ECHS? Is it for you, or is it not for you? But it's an opportunity for kids to further their education while being in high school. And of course, Mr. Thompson will talk about that. That opportunity wasn't there when I was younger, of course, that was 10, 11 years ago or so, but in addition...
Oh, sorry.
In addition, the money saved in relation to the ECHS kids, and the statistics will show you here in a little bit, that opportunity, just being a hometown person, going to your own high school, having that opportunity, not too many kids have that opportunity. But we invited Mr. Thompson here to kind of, to go over the ins and outs of the program, and feel free to ask him any questions throughout the process. But Mr. Thompson?
Hello. I'm gonna give you a little background story of our program and where we've been heading, and give you a lot of very impressive numbers that we have been accomplishing through our program. We can follow along in the PowerPoint up here. A little history, we were first endorsed as an early college high school in 2013. Every four years, we have to go through a reendorsement, and that entails an interview, a lot of data, a huge portfolio that I have to put together. We are endorsed by the group CELL, and so our last endorsement was 2021. Currently, we have 249 students that are enrolled in our early college high school program. We have 17 ECHS teachers. We offer 31 different dual credit courses, for a total of 105 college credits that are available at the high school. All of our courses are partnered through IB Tech and IU from Bloomington. We also are lucky to have WCC. They were recently endorsed as an Early College Career Center just a couple of years ago, 2020. They currently have 13 instructors, 56 dual credit courses, and 186 dual credits that are available within their building as well. Core principles of the ECHS program, any early college high school in the state of Indiana has to follow these eight principles. That's what we're evaluated on. Our targeted student population, underserved students from first generation, college students, low-income, students of color. Our curriculum and plan of study, provide a college-going culture for our students. The rigorous instruction through our dual credit courses. Supports for student success, collaboration, leadership, and data collection analysis. And that's all the non-fun stuff that I get to do behind the scenes. The data collection, it's a lot. Our dual credit instructors, the Higher Learning Commission, which is a college accreditor, they have a new requirement, and that is, to teach a dual credit course, you must have a master's degree and at least 18 credit hours of coursework in that content area, or the master's degree in your content area. And due to that new requirement, we have lost a couple of teachers that are no longer gonna be able to teach those courses. It's a concern across the state, anyone that's doing dual credit courses. But it has been extended several times now, started before COVID, and now we're out to 2025. Right now, the 17 teachers that we have, I think, we're safe. But there are a lot of opportunities out there for our teachers to get free credits. They can go back and finish their masters or get the 18 hours if they wish to do so. The reason we chose to do ECHS back in 2013, if we look at stats across the state of Indiana, out of every 100 students that enter as freshmen in high school, only 70 of those are graduating high school within four years. 45 will enter college after high school, only 32 are going to their second year of college, and 16 out of those 100 will graduate college on time. And that's across the state of Indiana. Students that are involved in a program like this, studies now and data shows that 94% of the students that earn the Indiana College Core will attend college. 70% of those meet benchmarks for early success in college. And currently in Indiana, only one in five high schools offer the Indiana College Core like we do. There are 44 endorsed schools in the state of Indiana right now, and we were, I think actually, there were four endorsed schools when we applied, and five, six, and seven, there was three of us that got in at the same time. So we were the fifth of seven school. So we've been doing this for quite a while compared to other schools. In order to be an ECHS graduate, you have to be a member of our program and complete at least 15 transferable college credits, and then we consider that student to be an ECHS graduate. If they finish 24 to 29 credits, they will receive an ECHS seal on their CHS diploma. And then ultimately, a lot of our students really want to complete the pathway, and that's 30, minimum of 30 college credits. And we offer two pathways. We offer the Indiana College Core. Normally, you may have heard it, it's Science and Math or Liberal Arts. It's just one pathway now. It's just that first year of college courses that we are offering. And then we also offer a technical certificate in Business Administration. To my knowledge, I think there's only two schools in the state of Indiana that offer that. I thought we were the only ones, but I did meet, one school from Fort Wayne offered the Business Administration as well. The ICC pathway is a 30-credit hour block of general education college level coursework that transfers to any Indiana public college. They have to take the block of 30 credits for face value. So when our kids take Biology 101 here, it will go to any public school in the state of Indiana. It's an agreement, and they have to take it. Our speech class will go to IU, will go to Purdue, it'll go anywhere. Every school has to take that, and that's why we have the agreement, that's why we're a part of the program. If we weren't a part of the program, they don't have to take those for face value. This one's a little bit smaller, all right, but here is all the courses we offer within the ICC pathway. And we have each one of the headings in red. You have to take a minimum of one course from every one of those headings. So we only offer advanced comp under written comm, written communication, so every student has to take that advanced comp. Every student has to take advanced speech. And then from there, you can start taking, you have to take at least one course from each one of those headings to get the total of your 30 credit hours. So every student kind of does it differently. And I always give this example, I'm not gonna be the strongest math student. I would struggle in pre-calculus and trig. And so I'm gonna only take quantitative reasoning. It's not gonna be as difficult, and I get my one math that I need within that category, and then I'm able to basically pick and choose out of there. Maybe I'm gonna take two history classes, I'm gonna take possibly psychology and government, and I can take whatever route I want to to get the 30 hours. And when I get that 30, that 30 will transfer to any public school in the state of Indiana. And we're finding that many, many of the private schools are taking them equally. They just don't have to. They don't have that same agreement. Then our business pathway is a block of 31 credit hours, and it's only agreed to be accepted at IB Tech. But IB Tech has agreements with other schools, so they have one with Ball State. So we do have a few students that are finishing the business pathway. If they go to Ball State, they're gonna take all of them. I had a student a few years ago that went to Xavier Private School in Cincinnati. They took every single one of our business courses, and they were directly admitted into the sports marketing program at Xavier. Here are the courses that are needed to finish the business pathway. The six classes on the left, we offer all of those here at the high school. And then a student will have to take advanced comp. Then they can choose one from psychology, advanced history, one or two. They have to have at least one of those courses, and we're short two business classes, so they have to go to IB Tech and take those on their own. They'll probably take a study hall here, take it online, and we are very lucky, IB Tech offers those courses for free as well. So the students that do finish that, they have to finish a little bit outside of here. This is a chart that shows the percentage of grade 12 students who completed advanced coursework. We are in the red at Connersville High School compared to the state average. So we look at 2021, 75% of our 12th graders completed at least one dual credit course, compared to 60% in the state of Indiana. Percentage of seniors earning high-quality college and career credentials, so like the ICC pathway, the business pathway, an associate's degree, again, we are outgaining the average in the state of Indiana. For the next few slides, I'm gonna give you some data, some numbers. Last year at IB Tech, it cost $150 per credit hour. At IU, it would cost $306 per credit hour. And so I base those numbers on the tuition savings of our students that are finishing through our program. And any scholarship money that I report is what the students tell me that they were offered. Doesn't mean they accepted it, but that's what they were offered. So we look back, from 2017 was our very first class that would have graduated as an ECHS program. We had 28 ECHS grads, 17 of those finished the ICC pathway, and one finished the business pathway. And then you go back and go through the years, you look the last couple of years. 2021, we had 68 ECHS grads, 55 of those students finished the ICC pathway. They have basically one year of college completed before they walk out of the doors here. The last one, 2023, these are projected numbers. They could always change, a student may not finish a course that they need. This year, we're looking at 54 ECHS grads, 41 finishing the ICC, and three are gonna finish the business pathway. And now we look at the number of credits completed from our ECHS grads and the tuition savings. And you look at last year, 2022, we had 1,911 college credits completed, tuition savings of $341,000. And very excited this year, for the first time ever, we have not had a student yet finish their associate's degree. We have Carter DeBoer, Carter Evans, Cody Hager, Brooke Mays, Cody Naylor, Gavin Pearson, Paige Pearson, Amy Rao, and Olivia Sargent. What is that, nine students that are gonna finish their associate's degree. And then we also are gonna have three students finish their associate's degree in accounting, Lilly Burrows, Owen Nabi, and Jacob Snyder. So I mean, that's, these are our first ones, and we have 12 of them that are gonna finish. So moving forward, we know what the classes we need to push kids to go there if that's what they wanna do. So I met with eighth-grade parents two weeks ago, gave them this news, and definitely, if that is something I'm shooting for, I would take French. Because if you notice, the French courses, if I take French III and French IV, it's 14 college credits. I mean, that's a, that's a big push when most classes are only three credits each. Class of '22, if all of those courses were taken at IU, because it's more expensive, they would have saved over $580,000. And then, that's not counting room and board. So really take that times two. It's $1.1 million last year's class saved if they would have attended Purdue, Ball State, IU, IPUI. Scholarship amount from last year's class, they were offered $1.1 million. From the beginning, from '17 to '22, so the last six years, our students have completed over 10,000 college credits. Tuition savings of $1.5 million. And offered $6.6 million in scholarship money, and that's minus the class of 2020, because I could not get that information from them. We were all sitting at home at that point in time. Don't wanna revisit that, but I couldn't get the information from them. Here is a picture from last year's class. There's about 30 students that participated in the IB Tech commencement, and they participated in that in May. So they walk at IB Tech before they get to walk here in Spark Bowl. You may have seen a few of these things in the hallway, just providing the college atmosphere. Top left, a lot of our seniors, they'll sign the little banners of where they have been accepted to go to college. Mr. Bottomley does a good job of putting the T-shirts up here in the corner or banners and finding out where every senior's gonna go to college. He will also have signs up for any student that's in the workforce that they're not gonna go to college. And we also have a board right up here with military. So any students who are in the military, he puts their names out there with that as well. This is a picture of the seniors that went to Ball State field trip. That's part of our providing opportunities for our students. And here's a picture of last year's class of our senior celebration. This year, to be May 10th at 8:30 in the morning, if you would like to attend, but everyone in our program, we call them up on stage, we give all their stats, their college credits, what they've completed, their future endeavors, their tuition savings, and et cetera. And that, and that is a picture from that. I also have with me four students I brought. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, get a little bit of their story. They're all in our ECHS program, so I will, don't come up.
I'm Rexon Myers. I've completed 35 college credits for the ICC pathway. I'm part of basketball, football, and baseball here at CHS after the past four years. And currently, I am undecided on college plans, but I'm building my resume through WCC. I ice out, and I've been job shadowing. I job shadowed ER doctor, Whitewater Valley rehabilitation, and right now, I'm writing the EMTs.
I'm Sidney Duncan. I'm a senior here at CHS, and I've completed the ICC pathway with 36 credits. And I also completed my career at WCC, and I'm a licensed cosmetologist. And doing that has made it easier for me to not stress so much about future plans, because I have a full back. But I do plan to go to Ball State and major in secondary education.
Hi, my name is Paige Daffler, and I completed the ICC pathway with 46 credits. I'm currently, I do soccer and I do track, and I'm going to attend IU Bloomington in the fall to major in psychology.
I'm Gavin Pearson. I completed my associate's degree with 60 credits, and I play baseball, basketball, football, and I plan to attend Ball State and get my bachelor's degree in pre-medicine.
Do you guys have any questions?
Gavin, particularly, all of you are very involved, what have you learned that you think will help you in life from the discipline of this program? Clearly, you had to learn how to budget your time and set priorities for yourself. That's also a very valuable part of education. How do you think that's gonna impact you if you wanna be a doctor or whatever you wanna be? In other words, what's the ripple effect on your life you think will have by having been in this program?
It definitely helps you to kind of stay on task, I feel like, and learn these things in high school, where it's, we almost created a college setting in high school, so we learn those tasks ahead of time. So we're well-prepared when we get into our specific fields of studies. So like you said, being a doctor, you're gonna have to be on time, you gotta be on task, and it takes a lot of coordination with others, too. And another thing is learning to help, like ask for help. The teachers here have been great, and Mr. Thompson and Bottomley, they help us a lot. They always come in and do visits with us. So learn to ask for help when you don't know exactly what's going on, that's another big thing.
And I just, I think that the classes that are offered here, the college classes that are offered, they definitely help with your responsibility, and they try to teach you not to procrastinate, because a large number of high school and college students will do that, and then it turns out to bite them in the rear end. So most of the teachers are great about staying honest, about getting our work done and turning in on time.
I just have a question. Any of you could answer this. You know, I noticed Mr. Thompson said at the beginning that this part of ECHS is also encouraging students that might not have as many supports as other students in terms of finances, just struggling perhaps, whether it's home life or school life. So I don't know, and this isn't about necessarily about you guys and where you started from, but what would you say, pardon me, to an incoming freshman who hasn't really worked that hard in school? Schools come relatively easy to them, and they're thinking, you know, I don't know that I wanna take all these hard classes. What would you guys say to encourage them? Why is this a valuable program for them, especially if they don't have a lot of supports?
I would say, I would say to just look at your end goal. That's kind of what helped me to get through things, because it's not always gonna be easy, it's not supposed to be easy. So if you keep your eyes on the prize, as a lot of people like to say, and focus on your end goal, that'll help you to push through and maybe give you more motivation. That's, for me personally, that's kind of how I look at things.
And in the end, it's, it's basically free money that they're getting, so I feel like it would be not smart to not use these classes to take advantage of what we have here at CHS. So I would just say, take as many as you can and get college done early.
And I feel like kids would like, if they don't think, or not are confident enough to think that they can do it, like encourage them, like it's doable, like you have teachers that'll help you, and it's not as awful as it seems, and it's just preparing you for your life, so.
I have nothing to think about, like after high school, like if you wanna have so much debt and like always be paying off, like your college debt, I wanna think about that, because that's gonna be your life if you don't take it serious.
And I would say it's a lot better to get some of these classes done now. For example, like the calculus class, it's a one-semester class in like a college setting, but it's expanded over a year to year, and it's a better teacher-to-student ratio. So it actually makes it a lot easier on the student. So that's a big encouragement as well for new people.
Thank you. That was really enjoyable. Thank you for all for joining us and being willing to speak up. Thank you for all for joining us and being willing to speak up. Okay, on to the agenda. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
Hi, Senator.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have two opportunities during our meeting for patron comments. We do patron comments on agenda items. That's what's right now, and we have one individual for that. And then we just have general patron comments when it's not an agenda item, and that happens at the end of the meeting. So Gabe, you are asked to speak, and it's on an agenda item, so, yep.
Good afternoon, folks. Good evening, lovely evening. Nice to be here, class. I'm going to go with this place. Just want to speak for a moment about the proposed baseball field. I see that there's a need for things. The thing I'm most worried about, well, first off, I'd like to commend Mr. Collins for coming talking about that early on and having a good situation to kind of help remedy some issues that may cause with the job that I have here. But I don't want to speak on that part more as a parent, because I have two kids here. And one thing I think that, and I told Mr. Collins this, that I think that I have a lot of trouble with is that we just as a school corporation invested quite a bit of money in athletic facilities just a few years ago. We put another athletic facility in very short order, you know, just a few years forward here. And we've not really invested in our educational facilities. One of the major ones I think that we could have an opportunity to do is to build an elementary school. Most of our elementary schools are very, very, very old. And if they were to take one and build one out the school farm, I think that'd be a tremendous opportunity for a lot of our students, especially our young ones. And just give them an opportunity to go to a good school, maybe solve some of the problems that kids see by moving around the district. We have lots of kids doing that, and then they would have one common teacher, and I think that would be a tremendous opportunity. And I encourage you guys to maybe think about that before we make a decision on one way to go with that. Another thing is, I think that we need to maybe try to capitalize on some of our already existing opportunities. We have a baseball facility here, but we also have many baseball facilities around the community. When I was on city council, we purchased a piece of property out by the soccer field with full intentions of making a very large baseball complex. I think we ought to look into maybe a partnership with the city to maybe make a very outstanding complex that would suit everyone. And I just want to kind of tell you my thoughts there before. If you had any thoughts on that, and if you have any questions for me, I'd love to ask answering them.
Well, we appreciate it, Gabe. We like to take the comments and kind of think about those, so thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes from the regular business meeting of 11023 and the executive session of 12623 and the public work session of 2123. The personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of January 2023 claims, 64038 to 64305. The annual list of outstanding checks more than two years old. The approval of Mark Beard's resignation from the redevelopment commission. Appointment of Jeremy Williams to the redevelopment commission. And then lastly, some very significant donations. And once I read these off and we approve the consent agenda, we would like to invite those individuals up that are making these donations. We received a donation of $6,100 from the Connersville Lions Club, a donation of $2,000 from the Everton Lions Club, a donation of $6,100 from the Kiwanis Club, a donation of $2,000 from the Rotary Club, and a donation of $5,000 from Union Savings and Loan, all to help with the installation of the handrails at Spartan Bowl. So I'd like to seek a motion to approve our consent agenda. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion?
Just wanted to say that with the money that the foundation gave us, that the rails are all paid for completely. So I thank all those entities, and you know, something the community's really asked for for a long time, and it's going to be done by April, I think. So thank you, everybody.
Awesome.
And they're sturdy. They're not like the lickety ones that we see other places. I will be using them frequently and a lot of other people that have mobility issues, and it's going to make a tremendous difference. Spartan Nation has no age boundaries. Unfortunately, we have accessibility boundaries. And now, ladies and gentlemen, those 15 steps down the Spartan Bowl are completely doable. So we expect you there. More than on the top row, please. It's just, they're heavy. They're really great. Chase McCombs did a fantastic job. They'll be there in time for graduation, so if you want to attend someone's graduation, you can do that, and we'll also have air conditioning by there. So lots of really good things going on in the bowl.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we'd kind of like to call up those folks who are here representing those various organizations. I think I have some of the names, but I may not be accurate on all of them. So if you wouldn't mind standing up, I think we've got the folks from Union Savings and Loan, Derek and Amanda, correct? Thank you. And let's see, who do we have from the Lions Club? Connersville Lions Club? You're both from Connersville Lions. And then, and who do we have from Everton Lions? Okay, we've got Gray Dully. Yep, anybody else from Everton Lions?
No.
Okay. And then Kiwanis? Oh, there's Devin in the back. Getting the camera turned on you, Devin. There we go. Rotary. Is it Mike? Mike Miller? Thank you. We just can't thank you folks enough for, you know, your donations. Wow, I wish, wish we could do that for everything we need. We're so, so grateful.
It's an honor to be a part of something as important as what this is. Unfortunately, as I've gotten older, I've found out how it's working.
Leslie, there are a couple that are not here tonight, it's Billy Weiss and Sasha Henderson. We're both very instrumental in this, making contacts, so I'd like to recognize them also.
Great.
And Bob's been over to meet with about him. He knows, he can actually tell you a lot about meeting with Chase McCombs because he's been there.
Yeah, and you were saying that they're really heavy.
Yeah, we got to see him last meeting.
Me and Darryl talked about was, at first Chase didn't understand, or his father, why they had used aluminum instead of steel. Well, they found out that the companies that make those so much of the time have to mount them on the backs of the chair or on something that's not as sturdy as someone felt. So with them being lighter, the aluminum worked better. But Darryl, Darryl got one, a steel one out, and he said, here you go. That's definitely the way to go is steel. It accepts powder coating better and everything, so I think it'll be a great thing for the community. Thank you.
We thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to get a photo of all of you. Mark, you want to stand up with the donators?
Sure. I just want to say thanks to Darryl. We found out about this through social media, and the next day, I was on, we were on the phone looking at how could we make this happen? Because the rules have changed, some of the accessibility pieces. I commend Darryl, and we went, we spoke to a couple of groups and, you know, got a call from Union Savings, and we went and talked to the foundation, and everybody's been great, and it's exceeded what we imagined would happen by paying fully for the cost. This wasn't a planned expense, so thank you for that. I always say Spartan Bowl's probably the most hallowed building in this community. Whether you agree with that or not, but I'm excited for folks who have trouble getting downstairs that they'll be able to access the floor level. We do have a lift that's in the back, in the back end. It goes down the stairs to get accessibility, but this will be more for patrons. So we want to get a picture maybe up front here. Come on up. She's the boss. Where you want to stand?
How do you want to sit? My knees, thank you.
Hey, Bob. Bob, you're not over there. I know that. You know how I know?
She can't get a wide shot here. I have to have two roads. Come on over, Devin. Doctor Green.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Anna, good to see you. Sorry, Ian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. What a team. Appreciate it.
My end, guys. Just give me the money.
Here, Randy.
I won't be in tomorrow.
We invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are welcome to leave as well. So, no pressure. Okay, we're going to go on to the action items for tonight. Personnel report, recommendations for employment, Mr. Harris.
Recommendations this evening, recommending under certified staff, Stephen Fletcher as the band director and assistant high school band director for the middle school high school for the remainder of the school year. Recommend Jamie Messer as the interim science teacher here at the high school. Classified staff recommending Aubreyana Carr as a special education assistant at middle school. Taylor Hyden as a special ed assistant at the high school. Ellen Isbell as a head start floating assistant. Christina Neely as an education assistant at Fayette Central. Haley Owens as a bus aide. Carly Payne as a Title I educational assistant at Fayette Central. And Kelly Schaefer as the bookkeeper here at the high school. Under extracurricular, have two recommendations there. John McMullin as the seventh grade baseball coach at the middle school, and Robert Revelley as the girls' golf coach at the high school.
Thank you. Seeing the personnel report, I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Who said that? Mark did? Okay. I'd like to see a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, approval of the Spartan Bowl handrail purchase and installation, Mr. Harris.
Well, of all of the things I don't expect to see voted down by the board, hopefully this is approved officially, but I'm making a request to move forward with the addition of handrails at Spartan Bowl. And I think as Mr. Beard said over there, we actually have collected a little bit more than is needed, and we will use that for some other ADA things, I think, at the Spartan Bowl, if we see the need there. So recommend approval of that to move forward on the project.
Thank you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the Spartan Bowl handrail, handrail purchase and installation.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion?
Hallelujah.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The permission for RFP at CHS, Mr. Harris.
As all of the board knows, we've been working on multiple facility studies through Gibraltar and those kind of things. We did do a general obligation bond back in, at the end of last year, but we have brought forward those funds with a real need here at the high school, and I'm requesting permission to move forward with a mechanical and electrical project. This is the soft water and the plumbing and all of that that goes with it here at the, here in the high school. I think a little bit of a unique thing with this, and part of my proposal is we're doing, instead of a typical bid project, this is what I'm proposing is a job order contracting. The state allows us to contract with companies that they have a very specific table that is used for multiple types of projects. Altogether, they said the book that guides this is 4,000 pages long, and it's anywhere from the cost for a linear foot of copper quarter inch pipe to the price of, for planting plants, whatever the project is. But we've had a very good relationship with North Mechanical that has done most of our HVAC projects, and I know our maintenance staff really appreciates working with them, and so we're working within those narrow guidelines that the state allows us to move forward. First, with a request for proposal, then we will bring that back for final approval to the board once we receive all of that information, so.
Okay, I have a question. So when we met in our work session, we talked about, I won't get the words right, but having this contractor person who is secondary to Gibraltar, not a staff member, is that what this is also included?
No.
No.
That's a construction manager. We haven't got to that point of all of this process yet, so that's still on down the line. This is, this is actually a contractor that's coming in to do physical work in the building.
Okay. Any other questions?
Randy, this is the top priority stuff. This is why we have so many plumbing problems here in the building, and it's not going to get any better, and we just have to get it fixed.
It's a combination of things. I don't know if it's the top priority, but it's a very high priority that's within our budget of what we have available to us, as well as the fact, as we've talked about this, there's a lot of decisions the board's going to have to make on buildings and projects and where we want to go with a big pot of money. But we know that this high school's going to be here. And so that's where we're putting in the early money here to maintain what we currently have and to build more life into this high school, so that we're not throwing it away on something that may or may not be relevant. We know the high school's going to be relevant, and this is very much needed here in the building.
And we also saw what the pipes in the high school looked like at a meeting from Gibraltar.
We did have a scary meeting with that, yes.
They did. They were scary, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Sometimes we forget, this high school's almost 60 years old.
I know.
County kind of forgets that. We still look at it as this nice new school, and it is nice, but it's getting old. Got to have some work done.
Okay, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the permission for RFP at CHS. Thank you, Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, permission to advertise new CHS baseball field, Mr. Harris.
The next one, I'm seeking permission to begin the process of developing plans for a new baseball diamond at Connersville High School. The process would include the development of plans, advertise and solicit pricing for the diamond. And then, this really starts the process with this approval, and then we would be, I would be back to the board seeking approval once we have pricing on the table of whether we proceed with it at that point in time.
Okay. I would, I would like to seek a motion for permission to advertise the new CHS baseball field.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to say that I'm not in favor of seeking bids for a new baseball field at this time. There are many needs at the high school and throughout the corporation that are of higher importance for funds to be allocated for. The current baseball field is in good usable condition, so to be conscientious of Fayette County taxpayers and patrons, I feel funds could be spent more wisely in other areas. My vote will reflect these thoughts.
Thank you, Lori. Any other comments?
We are trying to be Title IX compliant, and our school attorney just told us a week ago that we were not Title IX compliant. So that's part of the thing. Girls have a JV baseball field. As a matter of fact, it's where the boys' JV baseball field used to be, and we don't have a boys' JV baseball field anymore. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of permission to advertise the CHS baseball field, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we are on to public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. And Larry Garrett, who is, do you mind me saying where you're from? President of the Fayette County Farm Bureau. You're welcome to come and speak.
First of all, thank you for having me tonight. I know what I'm going to talk about was not on the agenda, but it was brought up earlier in the month. And just for starters, Farm Bureau's stance on K through 12 education is we support equal opportunities and resources for rural and urban schools and students. Also, we support family involvement, realizing it is essential for students' academic success. And with the comments made earlier this month about possible school closures, we went through this 12 area with Orange and Alphina, and a few of you on the board can remember that, and I appreciate all the help you guys gave. It, it's sad that we... And I appreciate all the help you guys gave. It's sad that we use an excuse like a decrepit building that we may have neglected purposely over the years. These issues have not just risen this spring or fall. This building is needed, needs as much work as everybody says. It needed it five years ago if it needs it now. So why didn't we do that before we built this nice gymnasium that my sons get to use? And I appreciate that as well. But we're talking about baseball fields. And, you know, those fields, yes, they're necessary. I enjoy baseball and softball as much as the next guy. But they service about two to three dozen kids a year for a couple of months. Just like basketball, it services kids for a couple of months. These elementary schools service kids year round and have for the past several decades. You know, if I go in that school on a regular basis at Fayette Central, I don't see any issues there. It is a very nice building. So, and I've been in Everton in years past, it seems very nice too. The issues, the issues were presented to me back 12 years ago that if I had five hog buildings and was raising pigs, but I only had enough pigs to fill three of them, would I still have all five of them? And I told the school board president at that time, God rest his soul, I said Dale, if I could raise better pigs in five buildings, I'd use five buildings. If I could educate kids better in five buildings, I'd do it in five buildings. At that time, we were told, we were promised if we closed Everton and, I'm sorry, Alpine and Orange, that class sizes would not go over 21. They closed those schools before my twins started at Fayette Central. And they would have went to Orange. They have had class sizes anywhere from 23 to 27 the whole time they were there. We were also told at that time, if it does go over 21, each class will have an A. They did not. We were also told, school will never start, you will never see your kid get on the bus before seven o'clock. I've heard rumor that there are kids getting on the bus at 6:20 as of now, probably from the Orange area going to Everton. And my boys have been on the bus as early as 20 to 7:00. So in the realm of equal opportunities, it's not really equal opportunity for a kid to have to get on the bus before seven o'clock to ride in town when that kid doesn't have to get up till five to eight to get there. Just things to think about. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to superintendent discussion group reports. This might actually be, I just wanna say to the board that this isn't really a discussion group, but it's an issue affecting the board. We will be needing to meet an executive session to do superintendent evaluation in March, hopefully. Our next board meeting is March 14th. And I think we're slated to have an executive session prior to the meeting for some, another issue, other evaluations. And I didn't think that you all would wanna come and spend like four hours, three hours. Because I think the last time we met, we met and we discussed the superintendent evaluation as opposed to everybody filling theirs out and just doing a rubric and not having conversation. And I think we all talked about that was a very effective way. We felt that was more effective. So I just wanna put that in your minds. I'm gonna be sending you an email with some possible dates. Or maybe I'll send them to Cindy and then Cindy can, because she coordinates better then I don't have to field all the responses and you can determine. And then we'll try to come up with a date that can work. But we wanna get that done and out of the way. There's no deadline necessarily, but Scott's contract technically is in this cycle. So we wanna do it in a timely fashion. So I just wanted to put that information out. Move on to principal and director reports. Anybody here have anything? Terry, please.
On behalf of the schools, I wanted to show the appreciation for the parents who have opted into our new enhanced communication system, school messenger. Those who have yet to opt in, it's a simple process. And we encourage you to follow through our instructions on the district's website. It's a simple process, so looking forward to our new enhanced communication system.
And Terry, is that through text? Is that how, I mean, the image that comes up on social media looks like it's a phone?
That's one function of it. It has text messaging. It has email.
Okay.
And it also has a phone dial. Should an administrator choose to actually record themselves and then broadcast.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other principal, director reports?
Now certainly at the career center, five minutes left. I have one more. I'd like to recognize student athlete, Orlin Foster. He was runner up in semi-state last Saturday at Newcastle. Goes to state this Friday for one match if he wins there. He's in the finals on Saturday. Couple of years ago, we had Evan Schaefer at the same position. He did make it to the finals, although he didn't win the state. So we're hoping Orlin, he was our first student athlete to make the resume, so Orlin Foster.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other principal?
While we're talking with them, I also wanna acknowledge our winter guard for their gold rating this past weekend. Their program's really grown and it was great to see it come back here in the last few years. So I wanna congratulate those students as well.
All right, moving on.
I wore my swim and dive shirt. My swim and dive team boys have their sectionals Thursday and Saturday this week. So I had to wear this to cheer support.
Represent.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, the girls just had theirs, so.
Yeah, the girls just had theirs. They did fantastic.
Yeah, they did. All right, director of operations report, Mr. Harris.
You have in front of you the fund summary. And I'm going to kinda talk to the new guy down here a little bit. But I think it's good review for everybody that, as you look at the fund summary, really the top five of those, education fund, debt service, operations, rainy day fund, those are the ones that we run most of the school off of. And that's the ones I keep the biggest eye on. If you look towards the bottom, you will see a lot of negative numbers. And at first you may look at those and go, holy cow, what's going wrong? And why do we have so many negative numbers? Those are mainly grants where we spend the money and then we claim the refund. So it's all in process. They do show up negative because that's how much we've put in for claims during a particular month or whatever, we just haven't received the funds back. But, so it's not a bad thing that they're negative. We do get it. And it's really the top funds, the education fund, particularly in the operations fund, which funds the bulk of the school district, not all, but the big, those are the big two. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Okay, assistant superintendent.
I just have a couple of things. First of all, I wanna thank the high school for hosting us tonight. We have a lot of great academic and athletic events that happen here. And I think it's nice for them to get the opportunity to showcase all the great things that they're doing here. Secondly, believe it or not, it is time for kindergarten roundup. I can't believe it, but we will be having kindergarten roundup Saturday, April 22nd. It will again be held at Little Spartans preschool. So we encourage all parents that have upcoming kindergarteners to put that on the calendar. We'll be there from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So it's that time of year again.
Thank you. Thank you. And superintendent's report.
I always have something. Thank you, Gabe. Appreciate your words. Thank you, sir, for your words. I take ownership for whatever I say, the way I am. I'm a straight shooter. Matt captures the best words or the worst words that'll come out of my mouth adequately. And I had to have Cindy play back that whole meeting because I didn't remember saying decrepit, but I said it. And the definition of decrepit, I heard it from someone else who spoke that, no one at this table. I don't use that word and I thought, hmm, but I did. And when you look at it's old age, having served its purpose. It's an insult when you say it about a person. So I told Randy today, he was decrepit and he was insulted by that. But my mom went to Harrisburg when it was Harrisburg. I'm a Connersville kid, so this is a hard discussion to have. And the people around this table are Connersville people. You know, some are transplants who've been here for a long time. But I just wanna clarify where we're at there. Don't believe everything you read on Facebook. Because there's some poor information being posted that we're closing Everton, we're closing Fayette Central, we're building on to Grandview. Surprised? That's not. But here's where we're at. If you recall a few years ago, we closed Maplewood. Not one person spoke up in concern of that. But we had a purpose for that building. We turned it into what I believe is one of our best programs, Little Spartan preschool. It serves over 250 kids. Great use. My job as superintendent is to inform the board of where we're at and looking down the road. We continue to lose kids from Fayette County schools, anywhere from 50 to 100 kids a year. That's just a fact of life. You look at Newcastle, you look at Richmond, you look at Franklin County, you look at Rush County, Anderson, Monsey, all the powerhouses back in the day when we were in school, industries left these communities. So what we did is we hired a firm, Gibraltar Design. They do this for a living. They did this for no charge for us as a service to look at where are we at with our facilities, because they're all pretty old. Everton's our newest school building and it's over 40 years old. So, you know, I believe that's my job as superintendent to keep the board informed because they are gonna have the tough decisions to make. And yes, we have spent money on athletic facilities. We spend money on a lot of things that, you know, we look at the plumbing. We're gonna spend about $900,000 on just infrastructure in this high school. So people don't always see how much we invest back into the buildings as well. Carpeting, paint, remodeling. But I think at the same time, we have a lot of discrepancies again. And I wasn't here when the, I was a principal at Alpine and Orange years ago. So those schools were near and dear to my heart. But I also know that we could not sustain keeping Alpine and Orange open today. We can't fill all of our schools as it is now, just three years after repurposing Maplewood. It's a challenge this board's gonna have to face down the road. And I'm not doing my job if I don't make sure that they have all that information in front of them. I do not wanna see one of our schools close. But if we are to maintain competitive teacher pay and retain staff and if we can provide our kids equal opportunities in all of our elementaries, that's gonna be a decision that maybe not in my time here and maybe not in their terms as board members. But somewhere down the road in the next decade, this is gonna be a tough decision because we can't sustain it financially. I mean, we have some of our schools with 15 and 16 kids in classrooms and others with 26 and 27. It is what it is. I mean, that's just the reality. People aren't moving into the southern half of Fayette County like they used to. I have my opinions on why. I think properties are being purchased by other people who don't have kids in our schools. My dad is a farm owner in Columbia, so I see how many homes are being purchased out there by folks. And it's a challenge because Brian can say that. It's a struggle to get 260 kids at Everton. And he covers the whole southern half of Fayette County just about to fill, not even fill the school. So we've got to figure out, you know, how do we try to keep our schools balanced? And it's hard. We don't wanna redistrict our families every year. And we have some schools with 330 kids in them. So I just want you to know, this is gonna be a hard decision, whatever happens. No decisions have been made. This company is coming in and presenting the facts. And one of the board's primary goals was we want all of our K-6 kids, when they enter Connersville Middle School, to have had similar equal opportunities in education. That's the driving force behind our elementary conversations. So I just wanted to be sure everyone was aware of that. I know this board, I respect them. They're not gonna throw something out there without having adequate time to consider it, to hear from the constituents, because you elect them and they hire me. So I'm accountable to the board. So I just wanted to put that out there, so make sure that everyone's clear on that. Because misinformation's easy to spread in this day and age. And, you know, next month, I will tell you Gibraltar will be back and I would encourage you to come, just listen. I think it's great that we have a great crowd here. I would love to see you come back again next month. Because this board's gonna have a tough decision to make, whatever we do. We have an opportunity, and I've heard words referendum being thrown out there. This is not a referendum. But what we've done as good stewards of our funds is we have a really low debt ratio as a school district. So it's similar to your mortgage payments. We have our mortgage payments. It's just set up differently as a public school corporation. Connersville Middle School is finally gonna be paid off in three years.
After 20 years.
26 years.
Oh, thank you.
25. So our debt's gonna be really low. So we have an opportunity to secure significant dollars to keep our debt level to our taxpayers to try to make some really significant improvements in our buildings. The high school project is just one small piece. We did about a million dollar bond this first time that will pay off in two years. Well, really, next year it'll be paid off. So this will be a bigger problem. It'll be in probably in excess of $30 million that we'll have capacity for. So what we have to decide is, and the board will have to decide is, when the experts talk to us, how can we get the best bang for our buck? So I just wanted to clarify that. Apologize for taking so much time, but I think it's important that people realize the tasks you have at hand. So, thank you.
Before we go on for the good of the cause, you know, one of the complaints from our board is that we don't get a chance to sit and discuss. Just talk about things, like Mr. Collins just shared with all of you. We come in, we do business. We're not allowed to meet outside a public meeting with more than, you know, we can't have a majority, so four of us can't meet. We often wish that we could sit around and just banter and talk about new ideas and things of that nature. But that's not the function, well, that's, it's hard to do that in this board unless it follows state statute about the reasons we can hold meetings and that sort of thing. At our public work session, which those are open to the public, we don't make any decisions. We don't vote. We just receive information, excuse me, receive information and in this case, just really bounce some ideas, hear what's possible. I did say in our public work session that when we get to a point that we have to make some decisions about how we're going to spend money on our facilities that are all in rather tough shape, all of our buildings are unfortunately, that I would like there to be some sort of public meeting of some sort where we can explain to everybody, because not everybody understands. Just like in discussing the fieldhouse, that's a separate pot of money. That money can't be used for salaries or other types of pay. So we have to be, we have to make sure that we're following the rules. And we understand that patrons don't necessarily know that. They're not here every month. And I've been on the board a long time. Laurie's been on the board a long time. And I still have to have things told to me, because we don't do this every day. So we welcome your involvement. It has been great to have more people at our meetings. So please come. If you, you know, it may be boring, but hopefully not too boring. So I just wanted to. Yes.
I'm speaking out of order, but when you talked about the condition of our buildings, our buildings are in safe condition and in good order. I just wanted to clarify that. And if you weren't at the work session, but one of the big topics that even brought up Fayette Central is the district years ago paid for sewer line to run into the city. We don't have a septic system out there. And with that, there's lift, if you know how that system works, and Darryl could explain it better, but you have to have lift pumps in areas to push it uphill or wherever it goes, right? And so we have issues with that whole sewer line with pinholes, pumps failing that are continuing. We're gonna have to replace that whole system and then we need to get water out to that building. We tried years ago. Landowners didn't want us laying, putting water lines through their property. There were a lot of roadblocks. Jimmy Croucher is our most veteran maintenance guy and he our most veteran maintenance guy and he shared that at the last work session because I wasn't here when that happened. So we tried to drill a well three years ago, about three years ago, and it came out and they, they witched it. I mean, we tried to, didn't have, there's just not water there. And so our, our water system is, is, it's worrisome. So to run water and redo the sewer, we're talking about millions of dollars. So that was the discussion that happened. But as far as our buildings being in good repair, we have a fine maintenance crew and custodial staff. So I just don't want that to be a reflection on those guys because, and the ladies, because they do a great job. So I just, thanks for letting me clarify that.
We, we, our buildings were built for not technology. One of the big things in the elementary schools, it sounds silly, but if you ever, if you live in an older house, you don't have enough plugins or they're in the wrong spots for, to access them easily. So it's nothing we were, we were doing wrong, but the schools of even the 70s, you look now, every kid's got the charger to plug in someplace and if you don't have any place to, to put it in, we just have so much different kinds of needs which need to be addressed just to, to do what we need to do on a daily basis. And as we all know, those things aren't cheap. But that does enhance the, you know, you don't want to have to say, well, no, you can't charge your iPad. No, you can't charge your, your device that you're using in the classroom. You got to wait till somebody else gets done. And unfortunately, that happens way too often and particularly some of our, our much older buildings. And you can't put those things on like you put in your house where you got that funny looking thing that you can put for, for plugins. Can't do that in a school because it, it creates a hazard. So we're doing the best we can with what we have and we're trying very hard to be good stewards of the money because we're taxpayers too. You know, I'm on a fixed income. I'm, pay taxes. I don't want my property taxes going up. I saw that they did, but that's okay. But all of those things have to come into play so we can do the best for our kids. And that's, that's all we're here for. To make sure that the kids of Fayette County had the best educational experience that we can give them. And ladies and gentlemen, that is no easy job. We have to do our homework and I think everybody on this board is absolutely dedicated to that goal. Making the best educational experience for our kids. What we saw from Mr. Thompson tonight, wow. How much money we've saved, how much money we've given these kids. Did you ever have to pay off your kid's student loan? We're not going there, okay? Or have kids paying off their student loans. We have $5 million that we're paying. So we're doing a lot of really good things, but it's hard work. Please trust us to do what we will do the best for our kids because that's the only reason that we're here.
Anything else for the good of the cause tonight?
I have something. We had two basketball players here tonight. It is senior night, Saturday night at Spartan Bowl. And guys, I'm prejudiced, but this year's team of seniors, we have seven seniors. Cody Naylor's name was up there on Early College High School. Gavin was here, our point guard. Braxton was here who bangs under the boards really, really well. It's their senior night. Let's fill the bowl. Also, besides senior night, it is the 30th anniversary of the Spartans Boy Girl Dance, which fills the bowl. And the, the girls will be there. They have graciously said, please, any alumni that was a part of that over the last 30 years, please come to the bowl and see the later version. And Sandy promises that she will not ask you to dance along, which could be problematic. But Saturday night is going to be a really big night in the Spartan Bowl honoring our seniors, senior boys, the boy-girl dance. It's time for Spartan Nation to rise up and beat Lawrenceburg. So we will be hopefully undefeated in the conference before we head to the sectional this year at Greensburg. So go to the bowl Saturday night and enjoy. These kids have worked very hard and they're just great, great kids. We have seven seniors that have dedicated at least seven years of their lives to the basketball program. And they have come a long way. It's really cool.
Thank you. Any other good of the cause? Ryan?
I just want to say, I realize at this time that I spoke out of turn before and this is where I should be talking about that, so.
Sorry, sorry, we were all a little out of turn tonight. Thank, thank you, Ryan. Okay, seeing no other comments, you know what I'm seeking, Mr. Hunt?
I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
And do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Meeting's adjourned.